Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:32, and I'm calling to order the November 15th, 2022 Borough Council Work Session Meeting. That is our call to order. Second up is our Pledge of Allegiance. Can I please have that led by Mr. Allen? Thank you. On to item number three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, come up to the podium, name an address for the record.
Holly Brown, 37, West Gay Street. I have three quick things. One is, I have noticed on Nextdoor, and maybe you have noticed it, that there is like a lot of people asking questions about the scaffolding on Rite Aid. A lot of people want to know why it's still there, and it's been there for a year, and wondering what's going on. And then I saw Eric Lorgis answered and said they're going to be in front of the zoning hearing board for some kind of approval to fix the facade, but why has it been up for a year? I guess a lot of people are saying it's ugly, can the borough do something, so just bringing that up. The second thing is, years ago, before COVID, no one was allowed to have speakers outside of their restaurants. During COVID, they were allowed to have them. After COVID, you allowed them to continue doing that. I don't, I live right across the street from Sedona, and all I hear all night is, all night, every night, and it's like Chinese water torture.
Does it go on, like, till what time, like, pretty late, like, all night?
Till about 10 or 11.
Okay.
Interesting thing is, I said this once in front of Jack Lowe's son, Adam Lowe, and he said that their rest, the people in their building complained about it also, because it comes up, the brick walls, it's actually louder in my apartment than it is on the sidewalk. And they complained, so they're not playing it during the day anymore. And I didn't know a lot of people in the apartments, because most of them are renters. And then I've just since met two people, one that lives above Taylor Music, and said that the Ryans Pub, she can't study, she lives above it, so I'd like to go to one of the committees and talk about maybe taking, rescinding that music outside thing. And lastly, I would invite, like to invite everyone to come to Uptown from November 30th to December 23rd, I think, to see the play that we've got on. And I've got some handouts, and I'm going to leave them on a table so everybody can get them, and it's a fun family play, so we'd like you all to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is an action item, the mayor's nomination of promotions in the Westchester Borough Police Department. We have three promotions here. Do you want to take over that? Thanks.
Yes, as you know, there have been lots of changes in the police department, some new additions, and now we're fortunate enough that we get to also promote people. We have met, and I've interviewed, we have interviewed. The first one is Corporal Jason Malicki. He's been in the department for 16 years, was hired in 2006, a graduate of Westchester University with a criminal justice degree, and current assignment in Squad One. We have selected him as being promoted for Sergeant. The second one would be for Officer Jason Frankhardt. He's been with the department since 2010, for the past 12 years, educated in New York College with a BS in Criminal Justice. His current assignment is in Narcotics Investigations as a detective. We have selected him to be promoted to Corporal. And the third is Officer Jerry Ferriola, eight years with the department, hired in 2014. Education includes the Delaware County Community College Fire Science and the Municipal Police Academy. His current assignment is in Squad Five, and we've also selected him for Corporal. So we have two potential hires for Corporal and one for Sergeant, and I'd like you all to consider these worthy candidates for promotion. Thank you.
Thanks. Any issues from the council on this? Any comment, public comment on this? Okay, are we good to put this on the consent agenda for tomorrow? Or do we have to take a separate vote? Can be consent?
You've taken public comment, you could take a vote tonight, and then we could have the swearing-in then tomorrow.
That would be probably best. Yeah, so if that's the case, maybe somebody would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Stefano, to accept the nominations for promotions as presented by the mayor this evening.
Second, Mr. Stefano.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded to accept these nominations. Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And President Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. That's really great to hear, and congratulations to those officers. Moving on to item five, which is a presentation from the committee to reestablish rail service to Westchester. Ms. Kelton?
Evening. Joanne Kelton from the Railroad Committee. I just wanted to report on our first stakeholders meeting that we had. It was very long, very detailed, somewhat intense. All the stakeholders were present except for Delaware County Planning Commission. They had been invited, but they, there was a conflict. So RDC came, who's a consultant to our committee, and RDC is committed to helping the borough retain its tourist attraction and to achieve the goal of restoring passenger service to the borough. Forest States was at our meeting, Joe Agio Chino, president of Forest States, was there, as well as many members of the Heritage Railroad Association. The position of Forest States and the Heritage Railroad Association is that a tourist train organization and passenger service are incompatible. And we did, our committee did put on a presentation of our metro concept plan, but they remain steadfast in their opinion that they, the two could not coexist. Alfazio, who is a professional engineer and a track expert consultant to the committee and to RDC, spoke briefly and said that the plan, if approved, not having to do with getting funding, but just the approval of the plan, he said that this could be operational next year, that all the, the outline is in order, we just have to get to the nitty-gritty with the county and SEPTA. TMAC was there, Tim Phelps, and he is very enthusiastic about it. He's talked to employers. For instance, he used Chester County Hospital as an example, he talked to them recently. They're having a great deal of difficulty filling open positions. They said that it's sort of an untapped resource in Delaware County, and there's no, there are no buses to get from Delaware County to Westchester, and he thought the train, restoration of train service would be a big help to a large employer such as the hospital. And then I added, one thing that I would love to see is that the hospital provide a shuttle between the hospital and Market Street Station. It would be a great advantage. SEPTA was represented by Ryan Judge, who's from Long Range Planning, and he listened to everyone, including the concerns from Forest States. His opinion was that there are more details that need to be fleshed out. The purpose of this meeting was just to get all the concerns on the table and to give an overview of the metro concept. Our next meeting will be to get down to the nitty-gritty of each of the concerns and talk about them in detail. And so there was, Councilwoman Dorsey raised the idea of transparency, and that is the whole idea behind these stakeholders meetings, is to get all of the plans on the table, the concerns on the table, the responses to the concerns, and I think overall, we had a very good meeting. The next steps are for Westchester Railroad and Forest States to put their concerns in writing. We haven't received anything like that yet. And to submit copies of bridge inspection reports. The lease with Forest States does outline responsibilities that they have, including to furnish the borough and SEPTA with the report to physical condition of the premises, what improvements Forest States deemed is necessary to maintain the premises. Forest States did say that they have repaired two bridges, but we haven't received any kind of reports. And so the county did ask them, by the next time we meet, to furnish those railroad and highway bridge reports. We anticipate meeting again in January, into our January meeting for stakeholders, but that hasn't been finalized yet. So we would recommend, as a committee, that although negotiations are soon to be initiated, I understand, in terms of resigning the lease, that the borough not entertain signing until we get these documents that are outlining the lease from Forest States, so that we have a good idea of the current condition in terms of safety and so forth. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I question, when I come back to SEPTA's take, and you're, the man that was there from SEPTA, his name is Ryan Judge, is that correct?
Long Range Planning.
Long Range Planning. So what, he just said he needs more details?
Yes. He thinks that, well, first of all, that the plan as been proposed by the committee, it entails operations that SEPTA doesn't utilize currently. It's not part of their system. So it's a whole new concept, but it does fit into the new concept that SEPTA is putting forth of the metro concept, so there would be feeder systems going into the regional rail. This would be a feeder system going into the, to the Wawa line. And so the SEPTA trains, just by way of example, use signalization, so they've got those catenaries over all the tracks, and the signals all operate with the trains. The metro concept doesn't require signalization, and so that, that's one of the things that has to be fleshed out with SEPTA, because to get into the nitty-gritty of why that is so, and what FRA regulations would control our design versus SEPTA operations, is something that is going to take a while to hash out. So that's just one example.
Okay, yeah, because I, that makes it a little uneasy. I need SEPTA, I need to feel a little bit more assurance coming from SEPTA at this point, so.
Yeah, we're not anywhere near that yet.
Okay.
And they're not anywhere near giving any kind of insurances. And as I said, this is the first meeting, I don't know how many we'll have to get everyone uncomfortable.
Gotcha. And there was somebody from RDC there, the owner?
President Henry Posner, Henry Posner III, Nate Osblund, who, also from RDC, he's an executive vice president, they were both there.
And what, how, what's their, what's their role at this point, besides they're the ones that are going to provide us with actual shuttles, right?
Yes. They, we would enter into the lease with them for, for the cars, and they also would be doing the official track inspection and, and provide a report, but we're waiting for permission, or they're waiting for permission to enter. We haven't received that yet.
Yeah, we're looking, working on that for, from SEPTA, correct?
Yeah, so that would be an official inspection, official report.
Okay.
And they also agreed to keep track of their time, because some of the, some of this is going to be in-kind contribution, for instance, towards our R cap funding. We would, there would be a match to get any kind of funding, so we could use the time that they're spending now on the project as in-kind donation, so that would help us.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Kelton. I was in attendance last week, and to say that it was tense, I think, is a bit of an understatement. I will also say, to be completely transparent, SEPTA, Mr. Judge from SEPTA clearly stated that they have every intention of renewing the lease with the restoration, the historic railroad.
That's right.
That the restoration of the railroad and the metro isn't really on their radar right now, that, to your point, there is quite a bit of work that needs to be done before that would even occur. The FRA regulations, you mentioned the track signaling, right now between here and Wawa, there, it's a dark, they refer to it as a dark rail. There's rail inspection that needs to incur, the bridge inspections that need to incur, there's zoning that needs to occur between all the municipalities for that metro to be in place. And, you know, I, it was pretty clear to me that there are some trust issues between the two organizations that need to be resolved, right? So we have this railroad restoration committee that the council has approved. We also have a historic railroad that is a destination for Westchester. We'd like to see them both exist.
Right.
And more collaboration, and I, and I think I made myself, I tried to make myself very clear last week during that meeting, that the concerns of the historic railroad, and frankly, SEPTA, need to be addressed before we would be able to move forward. And suggesting that SEPTA not renew, or the borough not renew the lease with the historic railroad is a non-starter for me. There, there would be no reason for us not to do, for us not to approve a lease with an organization that has been in existence and provided revenue and tourist income to the borough for 25 years. So I want to make, I want to make sure that that's clear.
I totally agree, and if I misspoke, I apologize. There is no way that we, we have, since 2014, have been adamant that we want to coexist. We provide a copy of a lease, there is a organization in Texas called Tex Rail that does exactly that, and we gave them a copy of the lease so that they could see how one municipality operates in conjunction with a tourist railroad. I did not mean to suggest that the borough not sign the lease. What I am suggesting is, and it's Forest States, it's not the Heritage Railroad, Forest States is a stakeholder, that they provide the copies of the documentation, which I think is very reasonable to ask for that, to ensure that, you know, their safe operation in, in the course of preparing to sign a new lease, we'll put it that way. In terms of, one of the points you raised was zoning changes. There are no zoning changes that need to be engaged in, in terms of this project. This is a right-of-way that is still there, and we don't need any further right-of-way. We don't need anything in addition. We could, at some point, expand the parking lots that are already there, and it's already owned by SEPTA, so it's SEPTA property, it's not, it's not land that would have to be rezoned by the municipalities surrounding the stations.
So I wasn't, the municipality wasn't specifically the borough, but all the municipalities between here and Wawa. That was mentioned last week during the meeting, that there was, there was, and particularly if there are some repairs that need to occur, I would imagine that there will be some permits and zoning, et cetera, to support the additional volume.
There, well, actually, all the volume can be contained within the SEPTA-owned property. Now, that's not to say this would be done in isolation of the municipalities surrounding the stations, that's not at all what the plan is, but the plan does stay on SEPTA property in each of the stations.
Okay, I'm just looking at my notes here from last week and this evening. I, you know, I think, Mr. Stefano, that we need to find a way that these two groups can work together. There are certainly some challenges there that we've been witnessing for the last several months, and, you know, I saw it up close last week.
I agree, there is, it's, to say that there's an issue between the two entities is putting it lightly, and I was not at that meeting last week. Yeah, one of the things I can't wrap my brain around is that you are very adamant that these two, that the historic railroad and a commuter rail can coexist.
Well, that's our goal, that's what I'm adamant about, that that's our goal, yes.
That it's even feasible, but then the other side of the coin, the historic railroad, is very adamant that it cannot coexist. So I can see both sides having their own interest in, in hand. What I really need is a third party to tell me and to tell this council whether that is a feasible thing. I need somebody to come in here who's not you, and who's not from the historic railroad, to give us a definitive answer, this is possible or not possible. Because if it's not possible, that might change the way we think up here, right? At least, it would change my thinking. So I don't know who that is, I don't know, Sean, if you have any ideas who that should be, possibly SEPTA, I don't know, but somebody needs to be very clear, and I feel like we need that answer fairly soon. I feel like we need somebody to come.
If I may, SEPTA doesn't operate any of their lines with a tourist railroad on it. Now, the person that we spoke to, and I, when I appeared in front of you to give you our 2021 synopsis of our work, I included Paul Ballard, who is from Tex Rail, and he's an international expert. He is the one that spoke to us, it was probably over Zoom, and he's the one that provided the Tex Rail contract. He's a friend, or at least a coworker of Tom Hickey's on our, so I can ask Tom if Paul could speak to us virtually.
Yeah, that might be a tiny bit of a conflict, but of interest, you know, and so I just, I just need somebody, I would love, I know SEPTA does not run, currently run historic railroads, or any of their tracks have that, but just to, you know, the ones that own the property, perhaps they would have their understanding of the rails, the rail itself, and understanding whether this is even feasible. I just feel like it's, it's this point where we're guessing, at least I'm guessing up here, I'm not an expert on this at all, so I just feel like we need a definitive answer. I need a definitive answer to, to move forward, that's what I, so.
The key, the key is scheduling. And so the schedule that, the draft schedule that we have, a working schedule, is only Monday through Friday, so all weekend trips would remain intact. I understand that there are occasional day trips, and if given enough notice, then there would be alterations to the schedule to accommodate those day trips. So that's how we're looking, we, meaning the committee, is looking at it right now.
Understood.
And so that, and sometimes there are even shuttles, if, if trains don't run, there's a bus shuttle, so that's a possibility. So we're putting everything in place to meet the requirements of Forest States, but we haven't received a written list yet, so I can't anticipate everything that they're going to say. But if, if Paul Ballard from Tex Rail does not meet your needs, then we can certainly find somebody else. There, I know Colorado has a lot of tourist train operations out there, so they probably have something that involves a passenger train, but I'll look into it.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Counsel? Okay. Okay, any, any public comment on this? Okay, thank you very much for your report, I appreciate it, Ms. Kelton, thank you. Okay, moving on to item six, which is a reappointment of boards and commissions and committee members who, whose terms expire this year. So we have quite an extensive list of candidates for fairly, you know, a lot of different commissions and committees.
Mr. Stefano, I would like to propose that we approve all of these committee members, with the exception of the Restoration Railroad members, until we get these issues resolved.
Okay, if that's the case, then what I'll ask is, does anybody else have any other, any other commissions or committees that you have concerns about?
Can, can you, can you explain your statement about the Rail Restoration Committee? You want everybody approved except for them?
Yes.
So what we could do is, if there's no other issues, we could put everybody else on the consent, and then pull that off for discussion for tomorrow night, that committee. Does that make sense? Yeah. One second, yeah. Is that, does anybody have an issue with that on council, or is that, okay. So everybody else is okay with all the other appointments, correct? All right, so that will be pulled off for discussion, does that make sense, Dana? Just, just that committee, just three candidates, okay? Yes, comment, Ms. Kelton?
I didn't hear Ms. Dorsey's comments, so I'm not sure what the concern is.
I, I suggested that we approve all of the reappointments that have been proposed tonight, with the exception of the Restoration Railroad Committee members, and those will be discussed tomorrow night.
Okay, is there something that you can disclose tonight, or give me some topics, or?
Well, as I said earlier, I think there are some issues or challenges between the Restoration, the Restoration Railroad Restoration Committee and Forest States or the Historic Railroad, and we'd like to see those resolved, so that we are moving forward and find a resolution to the challenges that have been presented to us for the past couple of months.
Well, with all due respect, those challenges will not be resolved by the end of the terms of these three committee members. It's too, and the process is too involved. The next time we meet with the county, who's the moderator of these stakeholder meetings, it'll probably be January.
This is up for discussion tomorrow night, so we can determine how we're going to move forward next, tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see if I can get someone from the committee to come, unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving that, item six, the consent with the, with the, minus the, that committee, well, those will be discussed tomorrow. Moving on to item number seven, which is the discussion of the 2023 Gay Street Timeline. Mr. Metric did provide us with some information in the form of a little document here, I don't know if that's an, was that an attachment, or?
It's not, because I produced it today, but I could walk counsel and the mayor through it, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. There were some questions at the top of the memo that came out of last month's work session and this month's ACT committee meeting. Those are, will the electrical upgrades that PICO is planning next year affect our closure decision? What are the labor costs to tear up and tear down the signs and barriers? Counselperson McCoy asked about support for the statement that was made about, there's a large number of people who prefer 24/7 closure. There was also questions, I asked the question, again, John O'Brien's in the audience, right? Yeah, sorry, when I re-listened to the meeting yesterday, I couldn't hear what you said, because the microphone was out, but the bid's opinion on the timing and extent of closure, an opinion from the Fire and Police Departments, and the impact on parking revenue. So I have two, two of your answers for that. For parking revenue, we know with very good confidence that when you close down Gay Street, those meters typically generate about $18,000 a month when it's open. So the question is, does that $18,000 of revenue go somewhere else in the borough? Or does it vacate the borough? Is that enough of a discouragement that people don't want to park somewhere else? And so we looked at the monthly averages for all meter revenue in the borough and garage revenue, and we did see a, although we see the $21,000 a month decrease in the average meter revenue between 2019 and 2022, and 2019 is the last full flush year of parking revenue we've had. We haven't gotten back to that point since, we're only at about 90%. While the meter revenue is off $21,000 a month, the garage revenue is up about $17,000 a month. So there is a bit of an offset happening there, you might be able to conclude that some of the parking is going into the garages that would have paid at meters in Gay Street. But I think the other thing that is helpful to consider is that when you close Gay Street, you lose about 65 spaces, more or less, in your downtown, but the total supply of, of spaces on street are, is close to 400, and we have 1,300 spaces in our two garages. So we have about 1,700 spaces. When you close Gay Street, you're erasing 4% of your supply from the equation, and it's our feeling that that's not an impactful number, it's an impactful location, for sure. When you come to town, Gay Street's the first part of the borough you approach from the east, but it makes up a very small percentage of the total, and it looks like, at least money-wise, we're pretty, we're pretty close to offsetting the decrease in revenue. money-wise, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty close to offsetting the decrease in revenue by increasing garage revenue. And then lastly, the, uh, switching gears to the labor costs, we did a, we did some quick math and we figured at $55 an hour, the cost of tearing down and setting back up Gay Street every weekend is about $1,600. So this year, we did it for, we actually added two weeks, correct? We did 17 weeks. We spent $27,000 this year in in-kind labor to do that. So that gives you an idea of doing that every week versus just doing that once. If you just did that once, you would, you would save, quote unquote, you know, $20,000 or more of labor. So those are two of the answers to questions. I think Mr. Edwards, we could help with the electrical upgrade issues, and, um, the chief is here to answer any questions from the view from the Police Department.
Um, I have a question about Pico utility work. Uh, I, I know it's like I've, I've gotten the timeline a bunch of times, but I feel like it keeps changing. Is anybody who can, who can update us on where we're at at this point? I know, John, you're usually pretty knowledgeable about it, but maybe, uh, if, Don, where's Don? I know Don's here. Don, there, yeah, if you have any updates on kind of where they're at this point going forward.
Don Edwards, Public Works Director. We received a schedule from PICO, uh, but it was not very informative. Okay, it was just one single line, and it said Harmony Four, um, will be finished in April of next year. Okay. Um, for Harmony One, that is also an active project, but they have not provided a schedule for that one as well. Um, I mean, we do have, for Harmony One and Harmony Four, we, we do have, um, a project area, um, where the work is going to occur, but, uh, we just have not gotten, uh, much good information, uh, from PICO, and, uh, I think that's an issue.
Okay. Somewhat of an answer. That's the best we can get from PICO. Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, I appreciate the, the numbers, Sean, by the way. I think it's, uh, it answers some questions for me, at least in terms of parking revenue lost and potentially, you know, recouping. Doesn't look like you recoup all of it, but that's a, is a decent amount, which is good to see. But then again, the labor cost is quite extensive, um, something that, so, uh, counsel, what do we, comments right at this point? Maybe this, Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Stefano, the, uh, let's go back to the PICO situation. Mr. Edwards, do we issue them permits to work in the borough or just because they're a utility, they come and do whatever they want to do?
Great question. Um, well, they do get permits. Um, not all, not all the time. They get, they get it from the borough on Borough Roads, um, and the same is true for state roads. Okay, so, um, High Street, uh, Gay Street, you know, those roads, um, but it's been pretty routine that, that their contractors, I'm not about routine, but, uh, it's not unusual for their contractors to just show up and start doing work, and a bunch of people, including residents, probably calling you, um, you know, are wondering what's going on, and we don't know. So.
Okay, that's, that's, let's go back to the kitchen table, and I'm not going to lean into the microphone like Joe Biden does and says, what are we going to do about it? But the fact of the matter is, most of the streets in the borough, other than the state highways, uh, we own.
Yes.
Uh, we also have a 44 police department, men, uh, staff police department.
Yep.
Um, if they're not supposed to be in the borough, uh, the chief executive officer has the ability, I believe, to notify someone's in violation of the borough code somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't want to start a war. We do have a flag, by the way. We have a flag. We have to go to war with Downingtown or West Ocean, but, um, I don't think we need a flag for the Pico or Aqua.
Right.
But I think we've been pushover, I mean, granted, I appreciate all the work they're doing that we're really indirectly paying for, but not paying for.
Right.
Because our rates are going to go up, and they have, but the fact is, uh, as a home rule charter municipality, I believe that we have some standing that we should probably check with our solicitors to make sure that moving into spring, uh, we have solid ground that either stop the work or pull their permits until we, uh, we get, we get something that is more suitable for the residents of the borough. Just because you always did it, doesn't mean you always did it.
Right. Well, one other suggestion I would, uh, make is to, um, strengthen our permits so that we clearly say, say in there that, you know, that when they sign off, you know, they agree that we will shut them down if they don't follow the proper procedure.
All right, so we do have a solution. So we don't need the flag. We don't need to go to war.
Yeah.
So, um, Mr. Stefano and Mayor, I would strongly urge council to, to get with the solicitors that, you know, obviously a current contract, we probably can't change, but moving forward and with new contracts for new permits, we should, you know, change the permitting situation where, uh, you, the mayor, and the chief executive officer has control of the borough.
Yeah.
Instead of being pushed around.
Right. Uh, I, I would, I'd like to add to that, that I think that there's an even broader issue with PICO. We've had a lot of problems with getting them to respond to out, um, electrical outages for, uh, streetlights, decorative lights downtown. Um, you remember that? And I, yeah, oh, yeah, and, and I, you know, I, I was about as strong as, I went too far, probably, but I, I do think.
No, you're not in jail, so you didn't go too far.
Okay.
That's too far.
Yeah. But I think there's a broader issue. I mean, quite frankly, I don't think that, uh, PICO is as considerate as they should be and not as respectful as they should be in the Westchester Borough.
So their boss is actually the PUC?
Yeah.
So, uh, we have, in this borough, we have state senator, we have a state representative, we have, uh, a bunch of people.
Yeah.
That, you know, we're not going to turn the lights off, but, uh, let's, it doesn't hurt to kick dust up once in a while, and, uh, that's the way you get things done. Look at the post office, council, we put our feet in, in the mud, and we got the post office back to where it was in 1905. It wasn't easy. People don't return my calls anymore because I only listen to one radio station, 19382 or 380, one or the other, and, uh, but it got done. So, uh, it's possible that they could pay attention to you and Mr. Metric.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Um, yeah, those are concerns I would have to look at, I think, for real, Bernie. Yeah. Um, especially going forward, something like a continued closure of Gay Street, for sure. Um, uh, other comments on, on this, maybe on the document or just on the closure in general? Um, I know we've talked about it for a while, so.
Well, I guess I'm interested in hearing, there are some people here that, uh, you know, expressed opinions prior to, uh, to last month. Uh, Ms. Brown, in particular, you mentioned that, uh, you had a petition going around. Is that completed? You know, we've gotten other.
So, so, Mr. McCoy, I think we'll, we'll hear some, definitely hear some comments. I know there's people here that are specifically here for this reason. I'm gonna, uh, you know, just reading the, the council and reading the room, uh, I don't think we're going to consent on this tonight. We'll probably have to discuss it again tomorrow. Um, I could be wrong, but, uh, that's what I think, but I, I know there are people here to talk about that, and I would like you to hear genuine feedback from the people that are here. Uh, I know we've gotten a few emails just recently this week, uh, in regards to the closure, too. So, um, you know, is anybody else on council want to talk before I open that up? The public comment? Uh, Mayor, you want to speak? Go ahead, yeah.
I, I'm wondering, uh, if we're close the streets throughout the summer like we did last time, not just on weekends. Um, my question is this, can we, can we, um, I guess, capture some of our lost revenue for parking by assessing, uh, by having those people who want to use the streets, make the streets a little more attractive, a little more viable, and also assess a, some sort of assessment, I guess, a monetary assessment for use of the streets? Take the tables off of the sidewalks in the summer, put them in the streets for all the restaurants who want to be outside, uh, so that everyone kind of has an even playing field, and put them in the streets and get them off the sidewalks where they're congested and people have to navigate to walk through, and make the, uh, side, make the streets look a little more festive, and recapture some of that parking revenue by assessing the restaurant some sort of revenue. Is that possible? Is, is, is that up for discussion, is my question?
I, I could answer that, uh, Mayor. Uh, that's actually a good question. It's something that was, excuse me, raised during the Smart Growth Committee, uh, did discuss that with Kevin Gore. Um, you know, if they're using those streets, then they should pay something to use those streets to offset the cost, uh, to at least make up for the revenue or the labor involved from Westchester Borough to move the, um, the Ballards, uh, the concrete barriers. So I do believe that we'd have to work out some type of formula because not all of these restaurants or locations, uh, eateries, not all of them are the same square footage. So we'd have to balance it that way. Um, so that, that, I mean, that's a good point. It's something to consider as well. Uh, and I just want to point out regarding this document, I did read this document, and it's actually incomplete. It states it on the third line here, in third paragraph, first line, although this analysis does not measure the amount of revenue lost due to Gay Street being closed for parking on weekends between May and September in 2022. So it's still incomplete. Uh, I have the feeling that any type of revenue lost is revenue lost, and either that's going to have to be made up somewhere. I'm not sure where it's going to have to be made up, but it has to be made up either in three items, three ways you can do it. Either, one, you're going to have to increase taxes, two, you're going to have to find something to cut, or three, you're going to have to increase non-resident parking, increase fees in the garages and/or meters. Uh, that has been a discussion. If you raise it a quarter an hour, that's an extra $500,000, uh, in revenue per year that we can get. But the other item here is, you know, a lot of business owners in the downtown district have stated that they don't want it closed 24/7. They still have clients, they still have customers that need to get to their businesses, uh, and those parking spaces do provide them access to those businesses. So we just need to be cognizant of that as well, and I look forward to hearing from them tonight.
When, when it comes to the fee, Mr. Gore, does the, the fee that we charge a restaurant for the patio fee that we charge them, is that based off of the, their square footage? Is it based off of their, is it just one fee for any?
We charge a $200 fee for a cafe license, uh, whether that is the sidewalk or the platform.
Okay.
The platform also pays a $3,500 fee per parking space. So if they have two parking spaces, they'll pay double, but the fee get, the $200 fee gets charged regardless, parking space or sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree, Mr. McGinnis. I think that a fee for using dining on the street is, I think it makes sense. I, I don't know what that fee would be. We'd have to definitely calculate that. Um, but, I mean, it's, it's giving real estate for your, for your business. I feel like it, it makes sense. Um, yeah, so that, and does that kind of answer your question a bit there, Mr. Mayor? Yeah?
I, I think we should look at that, and, I mean, even last summer, we had, uh, yoga on the street and some other things like that. That's all, it could be income, you know? If someone wants street accessibility and invisibility, I think that's a possibility for income, um, depending on what it is, and, you know, if it's a square footage usage or however you decide to assess it. But I think if we use our streets, that's, I think I sent, was it you, Sean, many months ago, that, that, uh, you sent it to me, Sheila, uh, that wonderful streetscape from the town that, um, closed their streets? And so we can have a wonderful streetscape, but let's get off the sidewalks. Let's make the sidewalks walkable again and push it all into the street. Let's, let's stop trying to do both.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, well, there's already fees that we charge for, um, like Parks and Rec would, would charge for an event of some kind. I feel like this could also be, um, incorporated into that as one of the fees. I think that makes sense, for sure. Yeah. Um, okay, any other counsel before we open to the public comment? Maybe up here? Okay. All right, uh, so at this point, if anybody wants to come up and, and talk, just come on up and, uh, um, give us your thoughts. Thanks.
Good evening, Borough Council members. My name is Laura Ross. Um, I own the property at 22 North Walnut, and my State Farm Insurance Office is located there. Um, I've shared my concerns, um, over a 24/7 Gay Street closure at many meetings for many years now, so, um, but I felt compelled to come here today to, to reiterate to you that a 24/7 Gay Street closure would negatively impact my business, period. It makes parking, uh, downtown difficult. Um, it shifts all Gay Street deliveries to directly in front of my office, which is between, I'm between Gay and Market Street. It makes wayfinding, makes my office less accessible, and certainly less visible. I was excited when Borough Council engaged an independent consultant over the summer to review our options for a Gay Street closure and what that could look like. I was even more pleased when over 800 survey respondents said the current weekend closure was exactly the right amount. As you know, there have been numerous bid administered surveys as well, uh, with the respondents overwhelmingly in favor of a weekend-only closure. So I'm here to urge Borough Council to adopt the consultant survey, adopt the numerous bid surveys, and to consider a weekend-only closure. Earlier today, I emailed each of you a petition that was signed by 32, um, concerned business owners in the borough. As you can see, a 24/7 closure is lacking unanimous support amongst the business owners in the bureau, in the, uh, borough, and all that signed that petition were strongly in favor of a weekend-only option. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Charles Cease, and I have a property at 509 East Bernard Street. Uh, I'm just a resident of the borough, and I'd like to voice, um, a concern that I have about the discussion thus far. It's, uh, my first meeting here, so pardon me if I'm making a rash judgment about the discussion or the nature of the discussion, but it seems to me we've had a lot of discussion and conversation about money, about revenue, about cost, and not about the immeasurable impact to the community that a street closure on Gay Street has had. I lived in this borough through the pandemic, and I can tell you that one of the most life-saving pieces of that time was being able to walk up into town and see all of my neighbors, children, families, enjoying space. That's where life happens, and it seems to me that we have ceded the entire four-block stretch of Gay Street to vehicles and not to the members of the community. I challenge anybody to see whether or not there are more people, more customers, if you want to put it that way, um, in that space when those streets are closed versus when they are open, and I think we can't, uh, simply reduce this to a economic question, especially when we maybe have built our budgets around cars and not around our residents. Um, so I just want to make sure that we are, uh, thinking about this in a way, uh, that is people-centric and not necessarily car-centric, um, and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
My name's Len Doyle. Uh, I own Taylor's Music in Westchester, and we occupy, um, three buildings, 112 West Gay Street to 120 West Gay Street. Uh, just some background about the store, we're a retail operation music store. We instruct, uh, 300 students a week. Uh, we have 25 employees, uh, 25 teachers, and, uh, 3,000 rental customers come through to our store from the tri-state area, Delaware, uh, Pennsylvania, and Jersey. And so we encompass a lot of people coming into the area, and I just tell you that just to give you a feel for what our experience has. to give you a feel for what our experience has been with those customers coming through the area. This is over the last three years and this comes from our people and our customers coming through the store as well as our teachers and staff. We've experienced over the last three years, a pretty steady decline in traffic flow during these closures for the customers. As they struggle to get to our store, they struggle through town because of the parking issues that are not available, the storage of trucks trying to deliver product who are taking up the side streets. It's not a great experience, it's just a huge congestion. Students struggle trying to get to the store because if you try to park in, in the main parking spaces or making parking garages on, on Market Street as well as Chestnut, they're not that proximity to many of our businesses in the west side of town. You can't carry a string bass with mom and dad that may be six feet tall down the steps, up the steps, four or five blocks or a 50-pound amplifier. And this is my business, so I, I mean, I'm trying to share it with, with what other businesses may be dealing with as well, so I can only speak to how it affects our business. So struggling to get to our store has been a challenge and, and not a great experience. On Gay Street, I find, and I've sent pictures here, you know, you're welcome to look at them, in our block, I mean, it's a ghost town during, during the day. We're open at say 10 o'clock. It's rare I see people on that street filling the, the restaurants and eating out there. It's just empty. So we're subjected to the closure of potentially seven days a week. At what expense? You know, maybe what I found is maybe there's a little increase on the weekend traffic that we've seen, maybe, but it nowhere near offsets the loss of traffic and the inconvenience that we see Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's, it just doesn't and it hasn't for the last three, three years. Now maybe there's more traffic in certain areas where the restaurants are congested and you may see it, but I don't know that you're seeing it at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock. We in retail can't always just sell dinner shifts and make enough money to cover what it is from 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock. It's a different kind of retail. And if you just look for retail establishments who just are doing the restaurant concept, which is, is great, I think you're going to, we're going to narrow ourselves down to only have a mix of what works in that time. And I think what makes a healthy environment in our store is a collection of different types of businesses that brings students in, brings parents in, brings people in who want to service the community, a State Farm Insurance, a dress place, someone to get their hair cut, someone who needs to be dropped off because maybe their children are small and they can't go to a parking lot. So, you know, they drop them off for their meeting and then they go park and then they, the customer, you know, absorbs and shops throughout the town. So seven days a week strangles our business. I can speak for myself, I can speak for the people who, who work with me. I can't speak for all the other businesses, but I can tell you when I look outside my window, it's not busy from 10, 11, 12, 1. So there's not that, I know we all want to think that there's this traffic flow, this huge amount of traffic flow that's just going to filter in to our businesses because they're there eating and they're going to come out. That's not what I've experienced for the last three years. The other issue I, I find is just a couple of just specific things. You know, I did a study on, on the weather patterns. It rains 30% of the time through summertime, June, July and August, the last year. It was over 90 degrees a portion of those times. People are not outside when it's raining. People are not outside when it's 90 degrees. They're inside trying to get air conditioning because it's just not comfortable to be out there. So once again, if you're going to do it seven days a week, it's so extreme, it just makes more sense to just not, you know, put all your eggs in one basket and say, we got to do it this way. It just seems very extreme to me. The loss of customer traffic that we see throughout the week, the congestion of the parking, the loss of parking revenue and the stress of our customers just trying to get into our, our store just, I think, makes this really a difficult challenge for us. Those of you know me, I, I would really prefer, if we were going to close, that we just did and I know we're not talking about this tonight, I would prefer it just be two days a week, Saturday or Friday and Saturday, and then allow the retailers and the service centers to be able to have at least one weekend day themselves on Sunday so that we can service our customers too. Because some people may want to come out on Sunday and just access us. That being said, I know that's not an option for us right now. As far as the surveys go, I just appreciate the information on the survey because it helps us to understand. I just caution all the responses that the survey might, may not result in a similar action that the survey says it's going to, is going to do. You know, we see this in political polls and how wrong they are many times. People have good intentions and surveys don't always translate into reality. Just because someone says, yeah, I'm going to go support this, it may not happen and, and we're not seeing that happen in our business. So in closing, I feel if we're going to close Gay Street, I think the best option to have a healthy, is to have a healthy balanced approach, one that entices all types of businesses to come to our town, a balance for the retailers, a balance for the restaurants, balance for the service centers in the community. So we all can create a healthy balanced environment in our downtown business and thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else? So what I'll say to council then is, oh, Holly, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, apologize.
I have a petition, lots of petitions. I know there's friends out here that may not be my friends anymore after tonight, so I have to be really careful. I know this is a really difficult decision for you guys to make and just really quickly talking about the money, but unless I misunderstood it, it sound like it's revenue neutral. If, this is for 24/7. It's somewhat revenue neutral. As a matter of fact, we make money because it's $6,400 a month for, did you say $1,600 a week or $1,600 a month for moving the, all the things at weekend? A week. So that's $6,400 a month. So it's actually, we actually make money 24/7 because we lose that expense of moving all the things every weekend. Well, we'll go through those numbers, but I mean, it sounded like, you said we almost made up, it was like 20,000 versus 17,000 increased revenue in the garages, but we can look at that number again, but it, and then you add the $6,400 that it costs to move the things every weekend at the end. I know that there's people that, the, the blocks that are the busiest are obviously between Walnut and Church. They're very crowded and Sundays were packed. Sundays are packed out there. So I understand that the two, the east end, the west end, aren't the places that have as much traffic. Particularly the east end, I think there's a lot more restaurants, Taco Bar, Social, Avalon, there's a lot of restaurants there. I understand Tisch completely because they're at the end past the restaurants and so there's activity down there. So they, it's, I know it gets kind of dead down at that end. So one of my proposals when I was in front of the committee last week, which Bernie said he thought was the dumbest idea he'd ever heard, when he, until, he slept on it and got up next morning. So my proposal was at the end, because Tisch is there and Tisch Kids now is there, is that we put a playground down at that end. And Bernie woke up in the morning and the light bulb went off and he contacted, you want to explain to him?
Yeah, what I did was, first of all, absolutely full disclosure, I thought it was the dumbest damn thing I ever heard in my life.
I said that.
And I woke up the next morning and I said, you know what, there's nothing that goes on down in front of the, the exercise place and in front of Country Bagel. So I reached out to Stolfus Enterprises who make sheds, they make swing sets, they make playgrounds and I said to them, what's the possibility of you putting in the best playground, wooden playground that you sell in the middle of the street for the summer? And Stolfus said to me, as long as I could sell my product there? I said, well, it's no different getting a haircut. I said, at the end of the year, we could take chances and chance off the one that's in the middle of the street. The only thing that my concern was, was the fall zone where you'd have to put down that rubber. That would be, that would be a cost, but I would stress that they, they would do that.
And you'd have to be able to move it. I mean, for emergency vehicles, maybe it's in two pieces, maybe you have two sets, one on either side.
The only concern I had was in case there was a fire, whether the fire trucks could get past it. I'm sure, you know, John O'Brien, he can, he climbs lamp poles now, so I'm sure he can get around a swing set. But like I said in the beginning, I said, I thought that was pretty dumb, but then I said, Holly's on to something because it's dead down that end, it's dark, it's dead, nothing's down that end and the kids would translate into a strong activity during the day.
And business for our businesses.
So.
Thinking of you, because I don't want to lose your friendship. And I understand the petition. First of all, the, your survey that you guys did was only asking about that weekend. I don't think they said they were wildly in favor of that. I think what they said was, yes, that was nice. They weren't asked if they wanted 24/7. That wasn't even in there. But at the comments at the bottom, when I noticed up on the big screen up here, because I've been at every meeting, they said they miss the ambiance, can't have the ambiance with three days a week, they're still going to have it. They can't put the trees out, they can't put the tents out, they can't put the planters out, they can't move everything, so you're not going to have that. And, and maybe you don't have to close the one, the block from Darlington to New. Maybe you don't include that one. Maybe you leave that one open for Taylor Music and the people up at that end. So you don't have to do four blocks, I guess. You could limit it. But the one thing I'll say, when I was, summer, you know, you all knew I had an accident with my back, so my son was down here, who had not been here for a long time, he lives in Maine and we used to live on Middle Street. He goes out and walks around town, he comes back in and says to me, Mom, you live in a food court. And I do, I live in the middle of a food court. And as much as we would all like to think that our businesses run the town, the businesses that run the town are the restaurants and they're the ones that bring everybody into town and they're the ones that bring the people into me. I mean, I've been here 35 years. I, it's not my business that's growing the town, it's the restaurants that, I hate to say it, they control the town and the more people they bring in, the better it is for all of us. I understand Taylor Music, that end, and I was thinking if that street was closed, I was trying to think of something else we could cut up there and I found, I have another idea that he will say is the dumbest idea I've heard of. And that would be a little like putt, not chip and putt, but a little, what do you call that when you go to the beach and you play?
miniature golf.
Miniature golf, like a little miniature golf thing in the middle of the street. I mean, there's lots of crazy ideas that I can come up with, 80% won't work, but 20%, you know, like a playground at the other end. So I understand the businesses, I don't know what the, I mean, I've talked to a lot of retail businesses who had my petition in their stores. So a lot of them like it and I know that Melana doesn't love it and I know that Tisch Boutique doesn't like it and I know that May 23 doesn't. Not everybody loves everything, you're never going to find anything everyone loves. I guess my only thing is if you don't try it, you'll never know if it works. And I'd be very willing to help come up with any idea that would help bring things into town, like a playground. But, you know, I didn't have much trouble getting those 260 signatures. None of them are businesses. They are all customers that want the street closed so they can come in and enjoy it during the summertime. So I rest my case. Any questions? Okay.
One question and this, this is to anyone here. Most of the complaints from businesses, Lauren, it's not you, you, you're separate, so, but most of the complaints from the businesses that I have heard are about delivery problems, which are a mess as it is, in my opinion. And I, I want to solve those problems regardless of disclosure situation. In my mind, a more permanent closure where we can have playgrounds and whatever in the middle of the street would be wonderful. I want the delivery problems solved in a realistic way so that the town is more livable. I can't drive down Gay Street comfortably on a Tuesday morning right now.
No, the trucks are everywhere.
Trucks everywhere. It's ridiculous. It, maybe Tuesday mornings are a time that I should just not drive and that's fine, but I want ideas, not just about playgrounds, because that's wonderful, but I want more ideas about real solutions of how we can improve the delivery system because there are systems in place that the, the businesses are aware of, that the problems you have, Tisch, are real and we need to point at the problems so that we can get to the solutions. And, and the closure, in my mind, is an independent discussion. These are two separate issues. Moving parked cars is not the same as solving delivery problems.
As I mentioned before, because I was also in the restaurant business and I was in meat processing business selling to restaurants and I do think there's only maybe four big distributors, like Cisco, can't think of it, not that many big distributors that come in. Most of them, if you talk to the restaurants, most of those distributors, if you talk to them and say, you can only distribute product and deliver in the town before 10 or you have to be here between 7 and 9. Most of them will do that. I mean, this is a big business in here, these restaurants. We have a food court. So they're all delivering a lot of food in here and they're going to listen to you. You're not some little small restaurant that's out in the country. You have 40 some restaurants, how many in this town now? We're a huge business for them and they're going to listen if you ask them to deliver during a certain time. If the street's closed, then you don't have to worry about, you're not driving through anyway. So those trucks come in, they make delivery and they leave. So I think that that's, talk to some of the, like, talk to Sedona, talk to Iron Hill, get the names of those distributors, talk to them. I think they could talk to them and find out, but most of them will, I mean, it's all done by computer. So they put it in, they figure out their system, their, their delivery route and then they put in all the, the conditions of those restaurants. If the conditions of Westchester are you must deliver before 10, then they get in and they get out. So, you know, it's the way they operate. They do what, they do what makes them money and that's what makes them money.
Thank you. Do we have, do we have, do we have a lot more?
We've all.
Can I, can I stop you there for a minute? Do we have, can we show a hands of who else wants to speak? I, I hate to invoke the timer, but I think it's, we're dragging on, so you have three minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. My name is Tonda. I own Tisch Boutique and I own 135 East Gay Street and Ashley is my business partner and we've been there for 10 years, working extremely hard to build our business. And we saw an opportunity and expanded to a children's store across the street that opened Columbus Day weekend during the Restaurant Festival. It was fabulous. I have the utmost respect for this woman and her business that she's had for 35 years. It was my brother's favorite store in Westchester. No, no but.
Okay.
No but. I think it's a very difficult decision. I've come to a few of the meetings, the pedestrian mall looks beautiful. I don't know how I can facilitate my business with the street in front of my business closed. I have women that run in the store and say, there was a parking space, it was a sign. I have to come in and buy my $400 dress.
Jeez, we don't carry them.
Right. I have women that pull up to the curb and we have a hanger club and they want to press their trunk and pop it open that we learned in COVID so that we can put the items that they want to try on and then we pick them up at their home or they bring them back. So the business is much more extensive than just pedestrians walking into our store. And in terms of the restaurant and the food court, we are not in a food court. The restaurants on our street are not open two of the seven days a week and we are left down there totally in a desert. And especially when the, when the street is closed, no one's coming down to the restaurants and personally, I feel as though we need more retail in the business.
Oh, yeah.
As Ms., the owner of Taylor Music, we need to balance that. We cannot rely on restaurants that are open, some on my street, 4 o'clock in the afternoon until whatever time. We want a bustling commerce all day long. I can mostly relate to those persons that spoke this evening with the challenges of serving their customers to get to their store. Lara, trucks are parked idling, trying to get service to the restaurants or whomever they're making deliveries. Her customers can't. Her customers can't get to her. Taylor Music has been here since I was in Henderson and graduated in 1973.
You're younger than I am.
I understand that that's a challenge for them, and we have to respect these businesses. I don't know what the answer is. The pedestrian mall looks beautiful, but I think that maybe we need to really look at the infrastructure. Is that my three minutes?
Next time, maybe we do.
Okay.
There's a timer.
Thank you.
Cap it up. Thank you for your thoughts, I appreciate that.
I respect your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, how you doing?
Hi, hi. My name's Kathleen Martin. I'm a resident of, of the borough of Westchester. Um, contrary to, you know, some of the thoughts that we've heard tonight, um, I am more, I am in favor of more closure of, of Gay Street. Um, as a pedestrian that walks up to that area basically every day with my husband and my dog, um, when the street is closed, it's a haven for pedestrians. Um, Gay Street is typically, uh, made up of very fast, very intense traffic. And my husband and my dog and I have personally almost been hit four or five times in crosswalks, at stop signs, and at traffic lights. It's a serious problem. We live in a town, in a walkable town for a reason. We live here because we want to be able to walk, not use our car all the time. We want to be a customer at these businesses and at these retailers. But when we're, you know, we fear for our safety sometimes when we're up there and it's just, you know, normal traffic. It's, it's a big issue. Streets are where life happens. Where pedestrians shouldn't just be pushed to the sidewalks. Like, streets cannot just be solely for high volume, high, uh, intensity traffic. It can't happen in this environment. We don't live on 76. We live near Gay Street and Market Street and High Street. These are places where we're, we live, kids live, people live, they bring their dogs and their families. Uh, yeah. So again, just really in support. I understand that there are a lot of different viewpoints, and there are a lot of challenges for, for retailers and different businesses. But as a person who makes up this community, who those restaurants and retailers and businesses are for, I am in support of more closure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Craig Felice Cruising Style Barber Parlor, been here for 21 years.
I, I write down everybody's name and where they're from, and I couldn't hear you.
Uh, own a barber shop on Gay Street. 21 years we've been here. What you're proposing is not what I would consider what Westchester was or ever should be. I'm sorry, I'm a local, I lived here for 48 years. Um, there's a lot of things that I consider with the street closure being a little bit unsafe, one's fire, you know? Um, during the COVID shutdown, I remember the fire department showed up and tried to put together a drill to get to the middle building on our block. It took quite a while. I don't see that being safe. Um, other things are handicapped, individuals being dropped off. Um, everybody's always running late in Westchester because the traffic's so bad and there's no parking, and that makes it difficult to do business. So without people being able to drop their kids off in front of our stores, uh, elderly people, wheelchairs, you guys aren't considering any of that. And we don't have a parking garage down the end of our block. I'm a 135 West Gay. There's a borough parking lot that's for use after 5:00 at night, and the borough, and the garage that's over on, on Market Street, that's supposed to be, there's supposed to be a whole floor for the public, is always full by 9:00 AM. Where are our people supposed to park? Just include our block in this. We, it's dead down there. It's dead during the day. Nothing happens till 4, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. It drives me nuts sitting there looking at my business, hurting because we can't get people to our businesses. Thank you.
Hi. Karen Cavan. I moved to this borough in 1977. I lived down by the college, talk about no parking as a resident. Then we moved out of town to get away from the noise. But I opened up a business in 2005 on West Market Street, which I called the Hinterlands of retail, because talk about being away from everybody else. There was nobody else down there. I've seen people who parked there, no offense, Len, but mothers with their kids, with their musical instruments, parking in front of my store, walking around to his store. And that is when the roads aren't closed, they're open. So I, the other thing people aren't remembering is every street has an alley. The only one that doesn't is Gay Street between High and Church. All the other ones have alleys. I know for a fact that Carlino's will not take deliveries in their front door. They want them all in their back door because they don't want the deliveries going through the store. So there's no reason why the alleys can't be used for deliveries. There's just none at all. And, uh, as I've been a store owner for, I was there 16 years, the store is still open. And, uh, you know, you pivot, you, you do what you have to do with what's going on. If you didn't pivot during the pandemic, then you had problems. But we are in a food court, as Holly said. I'm tired of walking through these restaurants. They're supposed to have, how many feet are they supposed to have? It's a lot less. You can't get a double-wide stroller through a half of them, let alone a wheelchair. So the restaurants have encroached on the sidewalks, it annoys the heck out of me. I don't like the closure being just a couple days a week. I can't remember that, I'm an elderly woman now. And, uh, it's just, it's just, makes more sense to close it all down for the whole week, for the whole summer. It's silly to put it up and down all the time. I guess that's it.
Here comes Holly.
Hello.
Hi. Um, Melina Martinez, 101 West Gay Street, um, business owner, resident, landlord, all those things. I think that a compromise needs to happen. I think a weekend closure is a compromise. We still have a lot of unanswered questions, to your point, to my email today, how do we deal with the deliveries? I don't have rear access. A lot of the other alleys, they're not wide enough to have two cars pass them, especially big, like trucks. Um, the power lines are low, there's just a lot of issues there that I think we're still working out, and I don't think that pushing ahead to seven days a week is going to solve any of that. To the point of the budget, I think that with the barriers that you have, maybe you look for sponsors. I pay $250, I think, a quarter for my, like, 24 by 12 ad in the garage. Maybe you sell ads on those barriers. Maybe those could be sponsors that would help offset the cost of moving things in and out. I think that there's also a lot of other space in the borough that's not being utilized for that type of revenue. And do you guys have any other questions for me? Because I feel like we're all standing up here and not knowing what you think. No?
I just quickly, sorry, you go first.
I'm wondering with, since COVID is more or less over, is over, I guess, as it's going to be. I mean, with all the confusion of closing or not to close, why should we even open again? Maybe we should go back to pre-COVID times and not close the street at all. It was a question.
Not a popular, not a popular.
I'm, I've always liked events in town. I've been here, June is 20 years I've had my business on Gay Street. And whenever the Restaurant Festival would come, um, Spring and Summer Thursdays, Super Sundays, all that, I would buy the space in front of my business so that it wasn't, you know, taken up by food. I would put a tent out, and I would put clothes, and I would sell stuff, and I use it as an opportunity. So I do love events in town, I like that happening, um, personally, I don't know, that way. And I think it also brings a sense of excitement when it's not every single day. Um, but there's like this uniqueness, there's something to look forward to, there's something to plan and call your friends, like, let's go do this. Every single day to me is just not, it's like, okay, well, here we go again. So that's my opinion.
Did you lose business?
Yes. Um, in my point of sale system, we have multiple customers, because we also operate a lot online, Instagram, TikTok, Pinterest, YouTube, blah, blah, blah. So we have names for all those customers, and one of our customers is actually named Walk-In Customer and Parking Customer. The customer, like, Tish, I got a spot, so I'm going to run in and buy something, so we could track how much time my employees spend on our social media and our online selling platform, so we know where our revenue is coming from. So yes, we did lose a lot of the walk-in customer during the week. Thanks. Thank you.
Did you have something, Nick? Do you want to?
Um, I mean, that, that really covered it, but thanks for the videos, I, I really appreciate that, that was helpful.
Hi, how you doing?
It was Gary, I'm a business owner, 139 West Gay Street. And, uh, some great points, I don't need to reiterate on all of them, but we are a restaurant, um, however, a different style. So quick-serve restaurants were, you know, the average time that people are in the restaurant are 15 to 20 minutes. And so, uh, you know, this past summer, we definitely, and we do track this in our point of sale systems, did see a decline, you know, in business, um, on the weekends when the streets were closed. And we also have difficulties with, uh, deliveries, as we don't have a, a back door, so there's a safety issue there, uh, as well as an accessibility issue. So, uh, our feeling is a compromise. Um, and, and contrary to, to the other folks who have spoken, we are a restaurant. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien, do you, uh?
Thank you, John O'Brien, Executive Director of the bid. Um, I've talked to you all a long time, so I'm not going to, I'm going to be very brief, um, because I know we're going to be talking about this tomorrow. I would caution counsel, it seems that we're going down a familiar road, where our point of this meeting was to get some answers, and we are bringing more and more questions. And I know Councilman Allen, you and I have talked about how every time we have this discussion, it becomes more complicated with different things, about delivery times and fees and playgrounds. You know, our goal here should be to create a plan to give the business community and the residents some certainty. Um, the bid's position, we, you know, we went through the whole process of hiring a consultant, at least in the short term. That was a well-thought-out consultant plan. The bid believes that we should kind of pursue that, at least in 2023. If we want to talk about more macro issues that we've brought up here, we can, but I just, I'm just putting that on the record, I get a little worried that, you know, as time goes by, we're dragging this out because we make this a little too complicated, so that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe I can help move the conversation along. And so, and to some of the things that we've heard tonight, everyone has been very passionate. But, you know, we did go through the expense of a survey, we seem to be leaning towards a partial closure. It seems as though there are some issues that we need to work out before we would go with a permanent closure. The objective of getting in front of this, you know, doing this before May 1st, and we want to close on May 25th, was starting the conversation now, or two months ago, as it would have been. Um, I, you know, I would suggest that we find a compromise. I think Melina said it the best. It, it, we need to find a compromise. I think the compromise I'd like to suggest for this year is, you know, a partial closure, so whether that's Friday to Monday, Thursday to Sunday, whatever that, you know, sweet spot is, uh, that that's what we propose. And, you know, we, you know, whatever that time is, May to September, May to October, but I think that that's what we should have on the table right now. I know that there are a lot of people that would like to see it closed permanently, but it feels a little bit premature to me because we don't have, we don't have a fully baked plan. We do need to think not only about the residents, but the retail operations, um, uh, and storefronts that we have. And, you know, I, again, Ms. Martine has raised some issues around, you know, the deliveries in the, the alleys, which I had not previously thought, you know, we can't get two trucks through. Um, and the fact that you can't go through an alley is not as horrible as not being able to get down Gay Street, which, you know, and I think in parallel, we need to establish some of those, um, restrictions for deliveries. And we have all, I think everyone in this room has experienced not being able to get down Gay Street, whether it's, you know, 4 o'clock on a Thursday or Friday afternoon, or, you know, 10 o'clock on a Monday, uh, there's no parking, you, you know, you can barely get down the street for all of the delivery trucks. Um, but there is also an ambiance, being able to shop and/or eat, or just walk your dog and not have to hear a Harley, or, you know, get run over by a truck, or horns, or what, you know, so there's got to be a compromise until we have a better baked plan, and I think we can do this, um, purposefully for 2023.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I think counsel, we, it's, it's, we're at decision time. So we, we've, we've been discussing this for, for months, we've gone through the studies, uh, we've heard feedback, um, but at some point, we, we, we need to make a decision, uh, based on, on, on what we, where we're at this point. So, uh, I know that counsel's in favor of closing it, it's going to happen, it just depends on the timeline, as we've been discussing tonight. Um, for me, the big, I don't know if it's an elephant in the room, but there is a rift between the retail and the restaurants, and, um, I think, you know, the retail would say, we don't want to close it at all, restaurants say, let's close it 24/7. So I feel like we've met that compromise by finding the, the, the weekend times, and I feel like that is the compromise, uh, that both can be, can be happy with. Um, so that, that would be, that would be what I would, would be in favor of, so, a weekend closure. Oh, yes, sir, I'm, come on, come on down.
Very quickly, I heard, uh, another balance between retail and restaurants. Where are the people who live here in that equation?
That's understood, but I don't, if your business is on the line, I, I, I can't just dismiss that, I have to.
I'm not asking you to, I'm just saying that if it's a weighted question, if it's a balance between two interests, there is a third interest, and it is not split between the two.
Yeah.
Thank you. With all due respect, Mayor, I think if you take a look at the number of people out in the streets during closures and during not closures, I think that is not an equal number, right? If we look at the number of people that occupy that space, residents, right? We can talk about shoppers, but we can also talk about just people that live here, right? Our constituents. Those people enjoy that space. It's not a, it's not a question, right? We see more traffic when the streets are closed than when they're not, because there's space for people, not cars. So that's, I think, what I'm more speaking to, is that if we were finding it that when the streets were closed, that there was no impact on foot traffic, I think we would have a better case to make, that it's not clear what the people want. But when it is closed, we see the people fill that space. So I can't, I have a hard time saying that that is not a pretty clear signal that the people utilize the space that they are given. But I understand, I understand the, the survey results may be paint a different picture, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, quickly.
Just close two blocks. Just close it from Walden.
We're, we're not going to discuss that tonight, we just, we, we have, we have to narrow the scope of the week, so we're not here for another six months. So we're, we're only going to discuss, we have a plan in place to close the blocks that we want to close, the timeframe and the time of year, it's just, the question tonight is, are we going to close it for the long weekends or for 24/7? That, that's, we have to, we have to kind of stick to that topic, or else we're going to, we're going to be here for another couple hours, so, yeah. Uh, Mr. McCoy, go.
Yeah, I guess I, yeah, this is, I, I've gone back and forth a dozen times over the last two months of, of which way to go with this. I was in favor of the, the weekend only last year, and, um, I think it only reinforces the point that this has to be well-planned out for, for the long-term solution, which I think we're on our way to that. Um, but, but given some of, you know, the, the things that we heard tonight about, um, you know, what some of the people who actually have to work there every single day, and I appreciate that, um, you know, I love it as a resident too, but I don't have to go there every day. I don't spend 10 hours of not my day there, having to deal with, with some of the issues, um, and survive as a, as a business. Um, so I, I'm in favor, uh, at this point of maintaining the, the weekend closure only.
Thank you. Mr. Kara.
I think everyone's aware that I want everything shut down all the time, but, um, I have listened to a lot of the concerns of the businesses. The concerns of the businesses that have been raised are systemic problems. Almost all of them are systemic problems. Um, As soon as I was running for this position, the only concern that any resident came to me about was please shut the street down. Shut it down permanently, shut it down year round. I want a Christmas market. I want more of it shut down. I want to make those people happy, but I don't think that we have worked out the details of this plan completely. I think we need a real solution to how people are going to get to the, to get their haircut. I want 10-year-old boys dropped off in a safe spot so that they can get to the barber shop. I want the delivery trucks organized in a way that means they're only there in a predictable amount of time and then they're out of the way and they're not idling in front of other people's businesses. That's what I want to see happen and we're not there yet. I will support at this point a, a weekend closure for this upcoming year, but I will not support that ongoing. I think the, the council up here, the residents in town, we all want to see something beautiful and sustainable and permanent more than we want some, you know, janky up and down, let's move water barriers and change them out to concrete barriers and hope that that works and make that work. We have to get a real plan in place that is larger than what we have right now. So I don't think I'm making anybody happy in the audience right now. But I, I want you to know that I really care about these businesses. I really care about the, the people who are using these businesses and I really care about the community that we're trying to build and grow. It's very important that we have a lively community and I want to see a playground in the middle of Gay Street. That is not something that we can do if we're just shutting this down on the weekends.
Mr. Flynn.
Thank you very much. Full disclosure, uh, my family had a business on Gay Street and we were extremely, extremely successful. My daughter made a fortune. She made more friends than she did, uh, make, make money. Unfortunately, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, there's no business on the street, on Gay Street until a one o'clock lunch on Wednesday afternoon starts to open up a little bit. We had the opportunity to buy the classic diner building. They wanted $685,000 for it and we crunched the numbers and we couldn't afford to buy the building on five days a week. We needed it all seven days a week because we're only open for breakfast and lunch. So I lost my job. I lost my free food. I lost seeing my daughter every day at work. But up there all the time, I realized that there must be a reason why the sidebar and Lorenzo's and everybody else has closed on Mondays and parts of Tuesdays is because the residents don't come up in the beginning of the week. The borough opens up on Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoon. Since we started with this, uh, closing of Gay Street, uh, Mr. Galley and I, uh, about five years ago, wanted to make it into a pedestrian mall and we were told no because we'd never work. I wanted to look like Kate Mack where we vacation. The, the, the fact of the matter is, um, maybe someday it will look like that, but right now, uh, in this bad economic time that we're in, I don't think we should handcuff the businesses, uh, anymore than we are. To Mr. Doyle's point, uh, the businesses from Lorenzo to Tecca don't have a back alley. Everything has to go through the front of the building. Marlena doesn't have a back alley, has to go through the front of the building. So the logistics of deliveries, not just, um, uh, the 18-wheelers, but the small box trucks that are coming in delivering paper products, clog the street up. That's the logistics we need to work out. So since we started this discussion, uh, 2020, I've always been in favor of weekends only and that's where I still stand.
Okay. We can, I think we're going to, we're going to decide this tomorrow night. We can take some more discussion, although, um, I, I feel like at this point, I would hope that most of us up here have your mind made up at this point. And then tomorrow night, we will have to, I feel like we should make a decision and somebody should bring that to a, um, a vote. Okay? All right. So at this point, this will go on discussion tomorrow night, Dana, if that's okay for tomorrow night? Okay. So this will go back on discussion tomorrow night and I'm confident by the end of tomorrow night, we'll have voted and decided. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming out and talking about this. I know this was a, a long one. I know it's a heated discussion and I promise that we're going to make a decision up here the best we can. So, okay, we're going to move on to item eight, which is consider awarding the bid for the Taylor Run wastewater HVAC replacement project. Uh, there was no committee recommendation. Was that not, oh, hey.
Yeah, I'll cover that really quickly. Uh, Will Williams, Sustainability Director, I'll do my best here. Um, this is a 2022 capital project, um, with a $55,000 budget. Uh, the plan is participating in a DEP program, uh, energy efficiency in municipally owned wastewater, uh, plants. We got a report from that in September that, uh, recommended rather than replace this monstrous original unit, which is older than me at the plant, we would go to new mini splits, uh, which are, you know, cheaper to install, more efficient, um, and also modular. So rather than 10, 20 years from now, when we need to replace those, we're not going to be asking for $50,000, we'll be asking for $5,000, $10,000 here and there. So we put a lot of thought into this. We got seven quotes prior to going to bid because we were collecting information. Uh, the lowest price was $29,000. Um, the highest was $74,000. That was our co-stars price. Um, we took those quotes, we built a really good bid spec, we put it out to bid, we advertised last month. It was open, the bid was open until yesterday, which is why there's no committee recommendation from last week. We got one bid, $103,000. None of the contractors that gave us quotes put in bids. We think that was really just because, uh, you, you have to do prevailing wage. Um, there's a lot of more complicated stuff, red tape, paperwork, all sorts of things. So we feel like we don't, I mean, it's, it's twice the budget, but we also, only having one bid, uh, it'd be impossible to recommend that we go with this. So that's a long way of saying that, uh, my, my personal recommendation is that council reject the bid, which we have to do, and we go back to the drawing board on this one.
How much was that bid, Mr. Williams?
$103,000. Billy, would you go to the second page? Um, so our budget was, again, 55 and was just good budget because we had three or four quotes that were less than that and some that were substantially less than that. But when we went to bid, um, that, that price didn't flush out.
Wow.
It's disappointing.
Yeah.
Are these like the, the ones that hang on the wall that operate?
Yeah, we were going to basically get three of those. Instead of one unit, which takes up a room that's like a third of the size of this room, the unit, it's original. Yeah, we're going to have three of those little things on the outside of the, out of the building.
That's amazing. My house, uh, it's $3,000 installed by a local vendor right here in the borough. And, uh, it cools 4,000 square feet. So I, I say we reject the bid. You should talk to my people.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little complicated with the high voltage of the plant. It's not quite as simple as a residential project, but yeah, 103 is not good.
Does anybody have a problem with, with the rejection of that bid? And if so, do we need to put this on tomorrow night? We just can just dismiss this item since there's, or do we have to formally?
I think you gotta take an action.
We have to formally reject it.
Reject the bid, yes.
Okay, so can we put this on consent to reject the bid tomorrow? Is that okay? Okay. Thank you, Will. Appreciate that. All right, uh, moving on to item nine, which is to instruct a solicitor to prepare an ordinance to establish a no parking zone on South Adams Street at East Neale Street. This was talked about last month, correct? So this would be the, uh, our official first step in, in doing that. Questions? Are we consent on this? Okay. Do we have to pick a date for that or is that?
Not, not yet. We want to prepare the ordinance so that you'll have it at the next month's meeting.
Understood.
And process that.
Okay. Um, okay, so that's consent. Item 10 is to instruct a solicitor to prepare an ordinance to install two additional handicap parking spaces at 508, 508 East Minor Street.
So I would kindly ask, um, council and people listening at home, I know these are minor, um, amendments to ordinance that have to deal with handicap parking spaces. One of these, number 12, is to remove an existing handicap parking space. Number 10 and 11 are to install new ones. And those are regulated by ordinance because if you're parking them and you don't have a placard, we write a violation for that. We have not done our diligence and made the recommendation. We need to do the field work. I thought we could get it done, um, in between the time we met last week and this week. We just need some time. We would kindly suggest council, um, table items 10, 11 and 12 until we can, um, finish that work and make a proper recommendation next month. It just caught us at a bad time with leadership changing.
Okay.
So I, I take the blame for that one.
Okay. Are we, uh, so I say we, we're going to table items 10, 11 and 12. Yeah.
Thank, thank you, and my apologies to the people who are looking for these things to get done. I'm sorry, it's going to take another 30 days.
Okay. All right, so those items will be tabled. Okay. All right. So that being said, since 10, 11, 12 are tabled, we're going to move on to item 13, which are our Harb certificates. There are three of them with some stipulations. Anything that we need to go through specifically or any issues anybody has with the three?
No, none, none. These are just signs and replacement of doors and windows. That's it.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with any of those? All right. If not, then we will recommend approving 13 A, B and C for consent tomorrow. All right, moving on to item 14, uh, approve an amendment to contract with Portnoy Law Associates LTD for a collection of delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims.
Hi. Me again. I'll cover this quickly. Um, there's basically changes to municipal collections process going out across the state of Pennsylvania, so this is not unique to us. Long story short, first step in collections is, uh, getting much friendlier. It used to be $40 for an initial notice plus the cost of certified mail, so it'd be about 46, 48 bucks. Now it's capped at $25. Um, why we're talking about this tonight is both, um, the rate, the rate is spelled out in both our contract with Portnoy and by ordinance. Um, so hence we have this and the next item, uh, to update the ordinance and, um, up, adopt a contract amendment with Portnoy, who is our collections agency.
Okay. Um, any issues with this? No? Okay. Uh, this will go on consent for tomorrow night. Um, item 15 is schedule a public hearing on December 21st, 2022 to amend Chapter 15 of Borough Code Municipal Leans and Claims.
This is the same thing, so we have to do this to do 14.
Is it really the 21st? That's the meetings next month? It's late. Oh, man. That's a bummer. Okay, so that'll be on consent too? Everybody got a problem with that or is, okay, all right. So moving on to 16, approve modifying the 2022 budget for $404,521. Transfer from the general fund to liquid fuels fund to satisfy the 2019, 2020 audit finding.
Uh, good evening. Um, as everyone probably recalls, we received an audit finding from the Department of the Auditor General for the 2019 paving project. Uh, the 2019 paving project, the paving was done late and we did not receive prior authorization for that work. Um, so to satisfy the audit requirement, we need to transfer 404,521 from the general fund into the liquid fuels fund, um, to satisfy this requirement. The request tonight is sort of a two-step process. The first one being the transfer from the general fund into the liquid fuels fund. Um, since this transfer is an unbudgeted expense in our 2022 budget, we would like to make a second request, um, to transfer funds back from the liquid, back from the liquid fuels fund in the, into the general fund. We've identified a few areas, um, that are acceptable liquid fuels expenditures, that being the street sweeper that was, uh, previously purchased this year. We, um, purchased that from the ARPA funding. So that is an acceptable, um, equipment expenditure from liquid fuels. So we would like to transfer that back into the general fund, um, as well as, um, streetlighting expenses that we currently are paying from our general fund, but they are also an acceptable liquid fuels expenditure. And also under liquid fuels, we can expense, um, salaries in the Public Works Department for, um, our street sweeper employee as well as road crews. So the request tonight is, uh, two steps, to transfer from the general fund to the liquid fuels fund and then back, um, from the liquid fuels into the general fund so that there is not an imbalance in our general fund for 2022. Are there any questions?
No, I like that thinking. So as terms of an action item, there, there's, we have to add that language to 16 to transfer the, or is that a separate item, Mr. Metric?
No, what we can do is modify the, uh, action item to be, um, approve a transfer from the general fund to the liquid fuels fund to satisfy the audit in the amount of $404,521 and then modify the 2022 liquid fuels budget to allocate for $404,521 of additional expenditures.
Okay. So with that, uh, change in language, is everybody?
No.
You don't like it? Okay.
No, the, uh, uh, a question I, it. The question that I do have that we should probably discuss tomorrow night is, since the AARP money actually bought the street sweeper, my thought is that that money should go back into the AARP fund because that's, we didn't get it out of the general fund, we got it out of the AARP money so that, it, it, the money shouldn't go back to where it shouldn't be.
Um, if I may answer that question, um, so we essentially consider the ARPA fund account to be part of the general fund. So essentially, it is the general fund and we would be putting that specifically back into the ARPA account.
I don't know. Sounds hokey to me. The, uh, let's discuss it tomorrow.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Iber.
On this issue, uh, we met with PennDOT and, uh, we went full disclosure. We told them we got the street sweeper using the ARPA, uh, funding. Is it a problem if we do it the way, um, Barb just described? And he said no. So we, we laid it all out there as far as what we were doing. So I, I don't see an issue. And what I would suggest is that we would proceed this way and send it to PennDOT. And there's nothing that says they won't change their mind, but I would suggest that we at least try it. The worst they can do is say no.
Okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
At least we know who to go after if it, if it, if they're sideways. Name's Don Edwards.
All right. So that being the case, with, with the added language that Mr. Metric mentioned about adding the, the money back into the general fund, um, from liquid fuels, is, is everybody consent on that? Okay, so with that added language, Dana, we'll take, put that on consent. Okay. All right. All right. Enter, uh, item 17 is enter into a five-year agreement with Cartograph Software for Solutions, Subscriptions and Services and enter into a five-year agreement with Brightly Software Incorporated for permitting, um, property information systems using ARPA funds.
Sorry, Nick Fink, data manager. Uh, would you mind? Thank you. All right, I swear this is real quick. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Nobody wants me to read a wall of text. Um, so basically the purpose of this is updating our systems here, um, replacing our street protection fee billing and our permitting system with a new system that will be admin wide, so all departments will be able to take advantage of it. So we'll be able to put some functionality in there for. Big one that comes, that comes back to me a lot is, um, you know, putting some of the parking stuff in there, like handicaps. So instead of right now, everybody's going to fill out a paper form, wet ink, do that, bring it in. Uh, that'll go into the system. It'll all be automated. It'll, it'll create a single, uh, system of reference for everything we're doing property related in the borough. It'll all be searchable. Um, it'll be searchable publicly based on what we're allowed to put out there, uh, according to state law. So hopefully that would reduce some right to know. You know, allow customers, whoever. You know, allow customers, whoever, uh, to self-service via an online portal that'll be linked in with our finance system, our GIS system, uh, payment systems, uh, things like that. So our CMS system, computerized maintenance management system, this will mainly affect public works. Wastewater has expressed some interest in using the system as well as IT, asset management, tracking inventory, capital expenditures, uh, capital planning. Again, this will integrate with our finance system, our GIS. One day we're looking to hopefully get a request tracking system similar to a three-on-one, not a three-on-one, we don't be running a phone system. Integrate with that, create work orders, uh, really track everything to a minute amount of detail, uh, going forward. Uh, we want to integrate it with our, our smart assets, our big belly trash cans, our new streetlights that are all smart. 过程, so basically April through October, about fifty percent of what I've been doing is working on these processes. We went out, uh, we had, uh, admin work where we all sat down in a room and everybody said, here's our problems, what are we looking for in new systems? We did RFIs, um, which are requests for information, they're non-binding. So we went out, a bunch of vendors basically said, this is what we're looking to do, you tell us if it's feasible or not. Came back, we did, uh, we reviewed all the RFI responses. We did demos of the ones we really liked, the ones that we really, really liked. We did a second demo, we did follow-up questions. You know, and then the final vendors were based on feedback from staff. So all the admin staff pretty much has been involved, um, from every department at this point. So final section for property information permitting is brightly smart gov, formerly Stude Solutions. It's a cloud-based platform, software as a service. You pay an annual subscription fee. They handle all your infrastructure and security and all that. We just worry about making our processes work with the system. So public-facing portal, you know, user comes in, they create an account. They say, I need an electrical permit for this property. It goes in, goes through the process, through Kevin's department, building and housing. Automated process, if it's a building permit that says wastewater needs to check something on this, wastewater can go in, check off, yes, we did it. All the conditions are met, automated notification goes out, you're approved, you're rejected, whatever. Admin portal, we're gonna reload it with all of our existing historical data back to the late aughts, two thousand and seven, maybe. It'll cover all administrative staff and make it much easier to research properties. So, um, you know, part of our rules, or if anybody owes us money on certain things, we don't do certain services, so this, that will be loaded in there. It'll be much easier to flag properties like that. It's part of a Sourcewell contract that, uh, we are party to. Uh, and then our CMS system, we decided on Cartograph OMS. Uh, again, cloud SaaS product, work orders, asset management, capital planning, fleet management. It's part of Co-Stars, um, they come really highly recommended. Brightly came highly recommended, we talked to a bunch of their current clients. Cartograph, I actually had a lot of friends in the industry reach out and say, oh, you're doing an RFI for this? Look at Cartograph, so, um, everybody seems to be pretty pleased with them. All right, Bill, next one. Now it comes to our ARPA funds request, uh, so sixty-nine, three oh two thirty-one for SmartGov of that eighteen-five-ish is for the first annual subscription. That includes two months that they're gonna, uh, comp us. And then fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty for implementation services. So that's gonna include data migration from GeoDecisions and Muni Billing, which is our current systems. And then we're gonna do training with them, so all of our departments will be trained. That includes them helping us to set up all the workflows and everything in there. And then after that, the yearly subscription, subscription will bump up to $22,000. That'll be offset by the fact that we will no longer be using GeoDecision and Muni Billing, which currently are about $23,000 per year between the two of them, so that gets offset. Cartograph sixty-seven, seven two five, uh, first year. So that includes the subscription cost of almost $21,000 and then almost forty-seven for implementation services. Again, it's data migration. We don't have too much data to migrate right now. We spent a lot of time this year building data that's gonna go into that system, um, so. After that, uh, it runs about twenty-three a year, um, with yearly increases, I think, close to one and a half, two percent for the first five years.
So Nick, the, it's Nick, right? I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's great, Nick. The, this, the services that we're gonna be getting from this, currently, we don't have any of this system, like anything that's working in this regard.
For the CMS?
You mentioned earlier about having like a streamlined service, somebody needs like a, a permit, they put it in, it pushes it to the departments who need.
So for, for permitting, right now, we have a system that is cloud-based, but it does not have a self-service component for our customers. It doesn't have that automated notification, uh, piece to it. So it'll help to streamline on our end, um, because, you know, it'll notify sewer, sustainability, whatever. You know, if there's something here you need to do, um, we can set notifications, say this needs to be done by this date, um, for things like variances and zoning. Right now, our current system, it, it lets us upload documents, it lets us put things into a database and it's got a web UI, but it's not public-facing, it's not really searchable, uh, by the public like this will be. The CMS system, we currently, uh. Would you characterize our current work order system as analog? Don? So this, this would be a big step up and, uh, both of these products give us lots of room to grow in the future. And these are companies that are constantly reinvesting in their product, which is a big thing. You know, it's the worst thing in the world is when you see a lot of time and money go into a product and the company doesn't reinvest. And now you're with a product that you
Yeah.
can't grow with.
And then, uh, Sean, for, in terms of budgeting, and this is using ARPA funds for this, but there is a subscription cost that's gonna be ongoing. Are we clear on that and in terms of budgeting, you're accounting for that in future years?
Yeah, so the, the ongoing subscription, subscription cost is going to be between thirty-eight and forty-two thousand dollars a year for years two through five. We do have a savings because we're just, we're gonna retire those systems that we are currently paying for. You had the number, Nick, and I forgot it already.
Yep, so, uh, for the property information and permitting system, that's gonna run around $22,000. They have agreed to lock us in at that cost for the first five years. Typically, they would do a three percent year-over-year increase, but we got them to agree for the first five years, they're gonna lock us in at twenty-two. Our current systems, the two of them together, about twenty-three. And, um, you know, they may increase price over that time, so the cost savings over five years for that should be, uh, better than nothing. And then Cartograph, yes, that will be a new subscription cost around twenty-some thousand dollars over the course of, e- every year over, I'm sorry.
So we are looking at a net increase in years two through five of about eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
And
Yes.
these tools, so, um.
Not too bad.
But, but I, but I would also say too, is that because we have a, a broader vision of making these platforms work more, work harder across more departments, that kind of gets spread out across the organization a little better than it would be.
Nick's underselling himself too in all this conversation because you, th- these tools aren't, are only as good as you implement them. So we have a, we have a team on staff that can make sure that it's not just buying the fancy software, it's getting, getting staff to use it, getting it to integrate and problem solve as we roll out the implementation over a long period of time to make sure it's actually working. So I'm, I'm hoping it's, it'll be transformative.
Yep, um, we're hoping that with, you know, all the integrations that these pieces of software can do with our, our existing systems, it's gonna reduce a lot of administrative friction and a lot of friction for, you know, our, our customers and our constituents here in the borough.
Great, okay, questions? All right, are we consent on this? Okay, thank you very much, Nick, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll put that on our consent for tomorrow night. Eighteen other businesses, just to approve our October council meetings from eighteenth and nineteenth. We consent on that. All right, any other business? No, okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.